Call the order of the city council work session for Seabees Grand Forks for Tuesday, February 27th. It is now 5 o'clock. Please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted?
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel?
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder, Mike Pakshavinsky?
Here.
Tim Reapell?
Here.
Henry Tweetin?
Present.
Does turn in quorum. Number one, discussion on cell tower, Mr. Ellis.
I'm just going to cede my time to the consultant Garrett Lysak with Owl Engineering. He's prepared a report. It should be in your packet and he'll go through that, answer any questions that you have, and then there's an email included from the city attorney then as to where we move from here. So, thank you, President Olsted and City Council. I'll turn this over to Mr. Lysak. Or Lys... How do you pronounce it?
Gary.
Gary.
That makes it really...
I'll turn it over to Gary.
Time, okay. I think the best way to approach this, I'll go through the executive summary and that basically makes it pretty simple. In my report, I basically structured the report to answer any questions that a citizen would ask at a public meeting. And the first thing I do is I take the approach of making sure that the application meets all of the federal guidelines, meaning, number one, do they need it where it is? Does it satisfy requirements of the city for zoning, structural integrity, any nearby towers that could be used instead of this location, health standards? And I did ask, answer some additional questions as far as property values. I went through a discussion of property values and I went through a discussion of what the application, some of their exhibits, what they mean. They came in with a study showing eight or nine different colors and what they basically mean. But basically, I went through all of that, identified that the tower, where it's positioned or proposed, does fit the requirements. Basically, it does fulfill the requirement of, they need the thing for coverage and capacity there, so I went through that. I went through the interference thing where I made an assumption that, even though it's not proposed, I made an assumption that the city-county radio systems would be on that tower. And I made sure that there was no interference, just in case. There's no interference to either city-county-state frequencies on that tower. I also look at interference to homeowners, television, telephone, that kind of stuff. I didn't see any problem. The one problem I did find was the proposal of 65 feet. The city ordinance requires that there be two additional tower, users on the tower. But in my experience, a 65-foot tower would not accommodate usable users on that tower. To make that happen, I would recommend either one of two things. Either you increase the height 20 more feet and that way, that would accommodate at least two other users on that tower. Now, the city can decide not to require that two more users be on it, but in my opinion, if you do that, you're going to have more towers in that vicinity because somebody's going to want to put a tower up. But with the city ordinance being the way it is, you could force the users to at least locate on that proposed tower. And structurally, the tower can handle additional users. So maybe the best thing to do is open up for questions, if you have any questions about the report or anything, just let's do that. That'd probably be a lot easier.
Some of the mayors in the council have any questions regarding the study?
As you identified, from an engineering standpoint, the benefit of having a tower at that particular site, did your study also include that a similar benefit would be experienced if it were anywhere inside of this envelope? Or didn't you go to that extent?
Well, here's the problem. The problem is, when I look, when I do analysis on a application, the problem comes in is I can only look at existing towers. Because if you start playing that what-if game of where could it locate, the problem from a city's perspective is unless you have control of the location where to put it, you can't tell the applicant where to go. And that's where the problem comes in. It becomes a situation of a big chessboard. So I just take, basically, look at the application and then look at what is existing already, whether it be an existing tower or city property, can that be used?
So your analysis would not show that they could get similar benefit anywhere inside this circle? You wouldn't come up with anything like that?
Well, you make an assumption, in that circle, they could. But the problem comes in is, the applicant looked at, what I saw is a couple of different locations, and the problem comes in is you could find a number of places to locate, but then they'd have to go out and get a lease and get approval.
Yep.
And it gets to be, it gets to be complicated.
Yep.
So I have to look at, like I said, what they applied for.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you. And this will be along a similar question, but maybe more specific. So this analysis, this application exhibit that you have in the report, you say it has to have existing towers, but there's a tower at 20th and 3rd that isn't represented in this report. Is there a reason? And it's a cell tower. I mean, it's sending cell signal out, but it's not in this report. It hasn't been in any report we've ever seen, and I don't know why. Maybe it's, maybe it's not a cell tower, but everybody that I've talked to says it's a cell tower.
It's a cell tower, it's right across from my house.
Where, on the list, I gave a list of towers that I looked at. There are 10 towers there. Can you identify which tower that is?
Where's that?
It's on figure four, being the back.
Registration search results?
Yes.
Yep.
So three in East Grand Forks. I'm assuming one of them is the one north of town, one of them is the one in Industrial Park, and I guess I don't know if the other one...
One was terminated. No, that was not, it's constructed or dismantled. Dismantled one.
So, there's only two that are in this study. So there's only two that are in this study, which are the one in Industrial Park, which is the green air, the green circle on the right side of the thing, and then those one north of town, which is the green circle at the top of the picture. And then there's one in Grand Forks over by the, by the fairgrounds, which is the green circle in the left side of the circle, or of the picture. But in the middle of the picture, not represented, is a cell tower at 20th Avenue and, or 20th Street and 3rd Avenue. And like I said, it was one of the questions I had before, and I'm just wondering why either they're using it and it isn't doing what they need it to do, or it's being used at a different, or maybe it's got the maximum number of leaseholders, but I guess I would like it accounted for in some way. Because if you're using this as evidence that there's a need, to me, this isn't putting another poll, it doesn't, it gets at the points that you're saying is, if we don't control it, we don't want to go and put this issue on some other backyards or whatever. But if there's already a poll there, why, why are we going and doing this? And obviously, like you said, you have to deal with what the...
Yeah. I guess what I did was, I looked at, see, when I do my, my study, I start out with a clean sheet of paper. I don't, I don't consider, I do a search and it says, where are the towers that are existing already? Because I'm looking at the approach of, if it, if there's an existing tower there, they have to at least demonstrate that they can either use it or not use it. And when I went through the list, there are none of the towers that came back are within the search area that the provider has to be in to accommodate, either it's too close to an existing tower that they're using. Because they, they can't go on a tower if it's too close to one of their existing towers.
This one is like right smack dab in that light, that cyan color, right in the middle of that. It's east of, I mean, maybe it's too close to the other one, but it's, it's certainly no closer than the north, the one north of town is to the proposed one. And if they're supposed to demonstrate that they, they've looked at that, I guess that would be something that we should look at is, and maybe, and I certainly reserve the right to be wrong on what the purpose and, and what that tower could be used for, but I think I've asked probably five times about it and nobody has gotten back to me and said, "No, this is absolutely not a use." It's been, "Oh, we can't look at that," or "We can't do this," or "That isn't as part of the application," or "Is this?" So, I mean, to me, there's just a, there's something that hasn't been looked at.
No, the problem is, it's, it's either, I'm looking at where it is and it's, would be too close to an existing, existing T-Mobile location. Here's the problem. The problem is, if they could have located on the existing structure, they would have. But the problem comes in is, that is too close to an existing T-Mobile site. There's a site there to the south and, and east of what you're talking about.
It's no closer than what they're proposing is to the northern, the northernmost tower. And that northernmost tower has got more juice going to it than any of them.
Unfortunately, where they're, where they're putting it in, it's not closer because it's closer to an existing T-Mobile site.
You're talking about the one that's in down, or in Industrial Park?
Inside Industrial Park, yes. There's an existing T-Mobile site there.
Yeah, it's about a half a mile away and it's about, or three quarters of a mile, and it's about three quarters of a mile from their proposed site to the north tower.
The problem is, they already have a site there, and if they were to put the site where you're recommending, it would cause interference, it wouldn't work. See, the problem comes in is that when they propose a site, they have to look at their existing sites where they are already.
And we're talking about Verizon, right? Not T-Mobile?
We're talking about...
Verizon's the one putting it down?
Yeah, Verizon.
Okay, just so I'm not thinking...
Okay. The problem is Verizon has to look at their existing site, and the first thing they look at is where they have one already.
But this map that you have in your thing doesn't show that they're broadcasting or accepting any information from them, that current location. It just shows, it shows that they're broad, or they're using the one in Grand Forks, it shows they're using the one north of town, and they're using the one in Industrial Park. It has nothing, there's a big dead area over where this existing tower is in the, in the report.
Yeah, that, that is because, one thing, what I did in my report was, if you look at their application exhibit, the, there is a, there's, there's an opening where they don't get, they get poor coverage.
Right, the cyan color.
In my thing, I, what I look at is where they proposed it, and I basically bring all the, because in their coverage, they have five different colors. What I do is I try to make it simple. I bring it down to put the coverage in, and then what I simply do is remove them from the analysis. I want to see a hole in the coverage, okay? And the first thing that I noticed is, there's a hole in the coverage.
Right, it's right over the tower, the existing tower that they're not using.
Okay. But they can't use that existing place that you are calling out because it's closer to an existing Verizon site. They can't use it because it would cause interference to their system, okay?
Right, but they're proposing a site that is equally distant from one of their towers as this one is to that other one. And I get that you can't have these things, but if we're talking, and if it's because there's a different carry on them, our ordinance and our, our rules say that you have to allow for co-location to minimize these things. If that's the case, if we're all of a sudden talking about, now if there's other users using it, now what's the purpose of having a co-location, you know, cause in our, in our stuff? I guess we can talk about this all, all I've gotten from anybody who's asked about this is a denial that we need to even look at it. So I'm going to be a no vote to put this up until I get at least someone willing to answer the question, so.
I'm going to restate what I just said. The problem is, they cannot locate there because there's an existing site that they're using already. And, and they can't, it's interference, it would cause interference to their existing system. I don't, I don't know how else to explain it. I mean, because there's a tower there, the problem comes in is, it's, it's, it's too close to an existing Verizon site. It's the one that's on Grand, I think it is. Well, they're calling it Grand. In my report, they called it Grand. That's what I used.
If they're using a site, wouldn't it have, wouldn't it be showing that they have good signal at that site?
This is the one he's looking at. This is the map he made. If you go directly across, this red line here is 220. So I drew one just off of that. So what he's saying is, this one would be in direct interference with that.
Right, and when you look at the new proposed site, it's equal, pretty roughly equal distant from that north tower as this one is from that. So if that one is interference, then the other one would be interference as well, so...
And I can't explain that. That's what he's here for. So I guess if, it would be your questioning to the consultant, so he could always review it and come back, so.
One thing is, excuse me, the center lines at those towers are very different. The ones to the north are very tall, so their signal's up higher. And I believe those antennas are running a different technology, more voice coverage than data coverage, which is a much different signal that they're operating from. So you may not get interference to the north because that tower, those antennas are set at a higher center line, operating on a different frequency than the tower at Grand, where it's shorter and it's more data coverage.
I mean, the, the problem is, here's the problem that, that everybody has. When you do a coverage study, there are probably five or six different frequencies that are being used by these providers. And when you, when you do a coverage map, you have to come up with some kind of compromise to do coverage, yes or no. So, when I did my coverage study, when it says new there, I'm, I'm considering that's, that, the one that's at Grand already, I'm considering it. But they're calling, what I'm calling Grand is what they gave me as their existing site.
These are all their existing sites?
Yes.
So the one over by me is not an existing site of theirs, it's someone else's site?
Yes.
They can't go on that site?
Well, because it's too close to their existing site at Grand. That's the problem.
Yeah, but this new one's right, almost same distance. The Dagwood and EGF.
Yeah. I guess my, the point I'm trying to make is, I understand the need for technology. There's probably no one here that wants more data technology, more data infrastructure than me, but I think our first priority is to make sure that we do make it as small of an impact as possible. And to me, the first option is to look at existing polls. And to this point, I haven't seen anything. We keep getting this thing where it's, it's never listed, it's never even an option. And to me, that, that's an omission. So, like I said, I get what you're trying to say. I disagree with your, where we're at, and I've already stated my position. Thank you.
Do we in fact know that this is a working tower? Do you know that the one on 3rd and 20th is a working tower?
Well, I know it's a tower, so I know if it isn't used as cell, I mean, it could be, I would imagine it's as easy to put an antenna on a, already there tower as it is to put an antenna on a newly constructed tower. So I know the tower is there, so...
Because he pulled all the towers and...
Well, that's my point, is if they're not using it, well, that's, I'm trying to save them money anyway. I mean, why are we doing this if there's already a tower available?
So when I was first issued this search ring years ago, the first thing I did was identify the existing towers. So I showed the Verizon RF, the tower to the north, and that tower to the east. I mean, at that time, I don't know if I called it or something. They said, we're already on the tower to the north, and the tower to the east can beat their coverage gap. It's over a mile from where we're proposing. And for this data tower, we need to be right in the heart of the core coverage to get the data signal where it needs to be. So when it's sent to RF, it's over a mile away from the search area.
I disagree.
Henry?
I'd like to make a comment. The city, as part of its policy, is looking towards forcing the development in the north end to go east. It saves us money because if, if we would continue to go north, we'd have to have an additional fire department, it would change the police department, it would take more policemen, it's not economical. Now, here's what we've got going here. It's, it's like these roundabouts. The worst thing that you can do is to put a roundabout into a, an area that's already...
Henry, do you have anything on the, do anything on the cell tower, sir?
And, and I disagree with one thing you say in page nine, that there's no credibility that affects property values. I practiced law for over 40 years. Location and what's near it does determine property value. Our city attorney can tell you. We've got an attorney here in East Grand Forks that has attended other meetings. There's an old saying in the business world, if you've never heard of it, "Location, location, location." Now, the problem is Verizon comes in here at the last minute, and when you get a built-up community, why don't they get ahead of the thing? Next, next meeting, our neighbors up there should be invited. They should have been invited to this meeting.
They were.
But I'm against what you're saying. I don't care what results you come up with.
Henry, let's clear that right now.
Yeah.
The letter, the letter was mailed on Friday afternoon. I was in Minneapolis attending a seminar. I left Thursday afternoon.
I didn't see you come in.
Yeah, I saw it go there. You want to look at my letter? It was postmarked Friday. This, this report is dated February 1st, three weeks later.
I sent out the report when I received it. I also sent out the letter when I received the final report. I did the letters on Thursday, I sent them out. I did not do this in intention to not invite anyone. This is not a public hearing, this is just a review of the report, and there still will be time to discuss it. But to state that I didn't notify anyone or that I purposely held anything or didn't notify you in time is incorrect.
That's why we don't have a neighborhood here. Nobody could, nobody could change their schedule to be here.
So...
Sorry about the interruption. That is a little pet peeve of mine. That's really ambushy. I had, I was, I was gone to Minneapolis until 9:30 last night. I had a little bit of time to look at the report, not to analyze it or even try to study.
Okay.
I do have questions and I'm sorry to interrupt.
And there will be a public hearing coming up.
Yeah, that was my next thing. I have a question for you, but I'm going to clarify something with Mr. Gallstead. What his comments in his email, that this time, moving forward, there would be another public hearing, so people could come to speak, and that would be notified to everybody, how many days in advance?
It would be what?
We require a 10-day notification.
It would be 14 typically.
Yes, and so what happens is because the paper only runs once a week.
Right.
It goes a minimum of 12 days before the public hearing, and I typically send the letters out the same day as the publication of the public hearing.
I just want to make sure that everybody knew that.
I just want to clarify one thing here, too, is that this was a report to be given to the council and to explain to the council, so this would be on a normal agenda, this is not a public hearing, no, no requirement was made for sending out notices to the public for this. This was done as a courtesy to make sure that we were as open as possible. We did it as soon as, as soon as we could, so we, I said, this was not a requirement. We sent this out as a courtesy to the neighbors.
Okay. I'm just, along the line, sorry, Mr. President. What we have is basically a report that, that got to the bottom of the question, is there a coverage gap? And does this tower, the proposed tower, fill that gap? It's kind of what we, what we came down to. We didn't propose alternative sites, we didn't say what if this, that, or the other. This question was, is there a gap? And does the proposed tower fill the gap? It's kind of what it came down to.
And the answer is yes. Because when you, when you look at, example, when you look at what Verizon submitted, it's kind of hard to read, okay? So what I normally do is, I distill all that information, and I basically do a coverage study on what they're proposing. And I, then I just simply remove what they're proposing, and I want to see a hole in the, in the coverage. It eliminates all these other questions of move it here, move it there, move it there, move it there, because it gets to be exponentially difficult to do that because of the technology and the frequencies and all those other things. So when you look at figure five, I have put in what they proposed, then I simply remove it.
Yep, on six.
And there's a hole in the coverage. So they satisfy that, that, that criteria. But it gets, it gets even more complicated because what, what Verizon is asking for is also a capacity issue. And capacity is very, very difficult to analyze because, example, if you have a neighborhood that's streaming video at 6 o'clock at night with Netflix, okay? That has nothing to do with coverage. Because what happens with these sites is, imagine a hose, and when the capacity gets full, what you're basically wind up doing is having to restrict the waterfall. Because like example, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, when, when their bandwidth, when that site gets full, they're going to have to start doing what they call bandwidth limiting, limit the stream so that people can make phone calls and all that other stuff. Because a lot of the providers, what they'll do is, when they get a 911 call, that takes priority over somebody streaming Netflix, okay? That takes priority. When public safety uses it, that takes priority. So those are kind of issues that come into the, the equation that are, that are hard to put into a report because what numbers do you have? The site isn't built.
And I know there's an argument that by adding that tower, by adding that capacity, everybody on this whole circle arguably would see a better experience. Because right now, it's all probably getting drawn down into that hole. You fill the hole and arguably, at time... Because right now, it's all probably getting drawn down into that hole. You fill the hole, and arguably, at times, these all could see a little better service.
Yeah, well, because, you know, uh, the capacity thing has nothing to do with coverage.
Correct.
Okay.
But it's all about the flow.
Right. Because what happens is, um, how, how these systems work is, uh, it's like a, it's like a honeycomb arrangement, okay? And what happens is, when you're driving down the street in your car, now it's walking down the street. When you're driving your car down the road, your, your cellphone is picking up a signal from a carrier, uh, from a tower. It determines which cell they want to go to. And what happens is, as you're driving along, your, your signal is doing two things. It's getting weaker from the cell, and to compensate for that, it's increasing the power output of your cellphone to compensate for that. And the minute the numbers start changing, what it does is, it hands off the signal to a different cell. So, to, to answer your, your concern is, when you're driving around this area, these cells all talk to each other, and they're gonna determine which cell is the best cell to use. And you complicate the matter by now putting data on, like for movies and whatever else these children are using it for, texting, movies, whatever. That's what makes it even more difficult, because you just can't say, "Coverage is the prime directive." It's also, the minute you start adding capacity, you start helping these other cells around, because they're gonna offload things to each one of these cells, depending on who's using it, how they're using it, what they're using it for.
And unfortunately, uh, to follow up for your question and your question, I contacted five different consulting groups, explained to them what we were looking for. The only thing the consulting groups would look for was the application-specific. They said, "We cannot tell them that they have to look at another tower site or look at the location as a whole unless the city was willing to pay for that study on their own where there are gaps." But then they're looking at every different communication, and then we're telling them where they should be locating. And, and from their legal standpoint, they did not want to be responsible for telling, uh, carrier where they need to locate. So, they all stated one thing. "We will look at the application specific to the tower and whether or not it's necessary, and explain the reasons why." And that's all that they can do. So, unless we want to pay for something more, and even at that point, we can't specify where each carrier needs to go. So, that's kind of what they explained to me. Now, why they didn't look at 3rd and 20th is probably simply for that reason. They can't tell them that they can't build a new tower. They have to locate on a different tower.
Well, it's because when they pull up their list, it doesn't show up. So, they start from a, a spot of lack of knowledge.
Right. And, but that may also be a reason why they can't locate there is, if it's not showing up, maybe there's a specific reason why they didn't locate there to begin with.
There, there is a reason for that. Uh, I'll, I'll explain to you. The problem comes, and you look at the list I provided, this list also includes canceled, dismantled. Because a lot of the carriers, when they go to build a tower, will register the tower with the FCC, which then puts it in this database. And if, uh, example, a grain elevator wouldn't be on this list, but there are grain elevators that are a hundred feet tall, okay? But lately, these cell carriers, if they're putting up a tower, even if it's sixty-five feet, will register the tower.
Maybe it's not registered.
Well, it doesn't have to be under two hundred feet. So, that's the next problem.
Probably what it is.
Uh, and then, uh, I don't know what the provider looked at. Maybe this tower is not structurally capable of handling the equipment. It's like, when, when these guys go out and do it, when these gentlemen go out and do a site search, um, they're restricted. They first start off with a circle called their, their search ring, where the RF people sell, tell them where they would like to locate for the optimum performance of their system. They're not throwing darts at a dartboard and saying, "I, I think I want to locate in Grand Forks over here." They have an area they have to look at to, to, to satisfy the, the radio people. Then these guys go out and they look at the property that's available. They will look at, generally speaking, they'll look at city property first. Then they'll look at, uh, existing towers. They will drive around the area in addition to picking up the FCC list of towers. So, they just don't, they don't stop. And I've seen situations where they have ten towers in an area, but nobody's willing to give them a lease. So, now you have a next problem. When you come up to a city and I say, "Here's the tower we got," they say, "Why don't we go over this tower?" Well, maybe that tower guy doesn't want to give them a lease. So, you have to have a willing person that will only give them a lease, a tower there or a structure there. So, it gets, it gets fairly complicated. So, that's why when you talk to other consultants, um, they're bound because, uh, according to, uh, all the statutes, they can't start looking at other places to go, because unless the city has control of that property, they can't tell the provider, "Well, why don't you try over here or try over there?" But what I did do is, I did look at this list, and I did look at, is it possible to locate on these towers? Because your ordinance says, if there's an existing structure that will accommodate them and it fits their needs, they have to try there first. Also, city property or city structures. So, I, I did look at that, and I eliminated all of these towers that are on this list from the mix. So, I, I did look at them. If there's another tower that's there, uh, you know, I didn't drive around and look at all the towers in the area. I, I wish I could, but I, I just can't do that. So, I have to look at what's provided, uh, to me, either by the provider or the city. But like I said, I start with a fresh sheet of paper. I, I do a search on these towers to find out what's available, and I go through the list in a, in a very methodic way, because I try to make it so the city doesn't have to go through these what-if scenarios, because I try to eliminate that from the mix. And it gets to be usually extremely complicated, because everybody has a, a new, fresh idea. But unfortunately, there's a legal problem with that.
The other council members have any questions on this? Mr. Gassel.
So, in this day and age with technology the way it is, is there a different form that, of the way this coverage can be placed in this area? Or does it have to be a tower? I mean, does it have to be a tower? Can it be, can you put multiple spots through this area on streetlights, on...
Well, that's coming. It's called small cell technology. But the problem there is, um, at this state of the game, they're locating these small cells to fill a very specific need. They only have a range of about five hundred to a thousand feet. Example, if you had a, a business that was on a, uh, a manufacturing business, didn't have, let's say, didn't have fiber optics going to it or that thing, they would put a small cell in to accommodate that user. And example, I did a, I did a job for Gustavus University where they mounted small cells, nine of them, on light poles. But guess where they put them? Dorm, near dormitories, libraries, because they have a very specific window they're looking at where they had a lot of people, a lot of traffic, uh, in a very small area. And it does accommodate, but the trouble comes in, you're right, you're gonna get more poles, or they're gonna be lower. So, right now, where the, the state just passed the, I think it's a fifty-foot rule on the right-of-way for small cells. It's coming. But, uh, you know, years ago, people would say, "We're not gonna have cell phones in the future. We're gonna have satellites." That was twenty years ago. Guess what? We still have cell phones. We haven't got satellites. But, you know, it's gonna happen. And what's happening over the last, let's say, twenty years, what's happened is, you know, when, when cell phones first came out, they had three-hundred-foot towers spaced five, six miles apart. You had some right here in Grand Forks, okay? But now what do you got? Now, I'm only, I'm, I'm seeing cities that are proposing under a hundred feet, and a lot of them are like fifty, sixty footers, because they're, they're satisfying a very small area, because now we're, we're, we've got coverage now, but we don't have capacity. That's the problem. In your, in your situation, when I looked at the coverage maps, you have a coverage problem. Uh, when I looked at Verizon, their national map, they only claim seventy percent of Grand Forks covered, East Grand Forks covered. That's pretty bad, because usually, uh, those marketing maps are overdramatized. Nobody wants to tell you that you only get seventy percent coverage. They always go a hundred, "I cover everywhere, hundred percent." So, that told me right away that there is a coverage problem in your area. And you folks that live here, if you have Verizon, do, do you have coverage gaps in your phone? When you drive around, probably so. Depends on the carrier, because you know, you gotta remember, this is only one carrier, Verizon. You've got, what, six others? You've got T-Mobile, Sprint, um, is it U.S. Cellie that are here yet? I don't know. But, you know...
AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T. So, every one of those systems is different. They have different footprints. So, when you look at the map like I gave you and the coverage map, this has nothing to do with AT&amp;T. A lot of the general public will come in and say, "I got good coverage on my phone," and I ask them a simple question. Uh, we're talking about Verizon here, okay? And you ask them, "Who's your provider?" And they say, "AT&amp;T." Well, they might have good coverage, but the guy from Sprint or the guy from Verizon might not have the same coverage, because all of these systems were designed in a vacuum. They, they had no, nobody helped each other out, because they couldn't by law. They had to, uh, design everything independently, and it got to be very complicated. So, now, what we have now is a mix. Every company is different. They have, example, if AT&amp;T were to come in for the proposal, their map would look entirely different. And then your question would be, "Well, we have a Verizon tower. Can't you use that?" Well, if they could, they would. But that's the problem you have with, with, uh, being outside of the metro area. Uh, you, you're, you're coming up to speed, and now they're filling in their gaps when you get more people moving in. Because, you know, the problem today is, these young kids, I say young kids, twenty-five to thirty-year-old kids, don't have wired phones anymore. Everybody has a cellphone. I think it's up to like fifty percent. Uh, I still have a wired phone in my house. I don't trust cell phones hundred percent yet. But you talk to a younger person, they don't have a wired phone in their new house. They all have cell phones.
I don't.
You know? And that's what's happening.
Question I have for you, sir. Uh, on the, the coverage maps, the, this one, sir.
Okay.
Okay. What, how old is this data? And do you have that, was this given to you, or did you get it off the FCC?
Oh, I generated it.
You generated?
And what, what...
And how old is the data that you generated this map with? What is, what is that from? Is that from the week you did it, or is this...
Right now.
Okay.
I mean, the, the, no, the data, there's no data here. What I'm using is, uh, terrain data from shuttle terrain data, which is like one meter accuracy on the terrain. And, uh, I use the power coming out of the transmitter, and I make an assumption. Uh, the trouble, like I said, was with the number of frequency bands they use, I had to pick, uh, a propagation model that makes it so it's readable, because you would have six different coverage, uh, problems. So, I just sort of make a general, so you can see what the coverage looks like. The data is, that's signal strength on those maps. There's no, no time on it. It's what it is.
So, to get the maps, you make the assumption, what that power of that tower is.
They tell me.
The assumption of how far that goes out.
It's not an assumption. I, I, I calculate.
I'm just at...
No, no, it's calculated. In other words, if I were to move antennas up, like I move antennas up ten feet, twenty feet, and I can see the difference in coverage. So, it's, it's more like, uh, I'm actually predicting what the coverage is gonna be. And here's what makes it even more difficult. When you add in, um, all the frequencies they use, you now make it even more difficult, because it all depends on the phone. My phone's a thousand dollars, right? That phone is a lot better than a flip phone that costs sixty-five dollars. So, when you start putting that in, you say, "What's my coverage?" The coverage changes from phone to phone, age of the phone, where you put it, is on your belt, it is in your pocket. All of these variations, uh, come into place. I use three feet, like I'm using three feet off the ground as my receive antenna. That's the difference between a six-foot guy and a midget, okay? If you, if you use all those kind of numbers, these things can change. You know, I can, like example, the FCC, when, when they do a measurement of signal coverage, they use a thirty-foot antenna. Who the heck has a thirty-foot antenna on their cellphone? It's sort of, really doesn't make any sense. So, I use, I try to use real-world numbers to give you, uh, an idea of what to expect. These are not generated to give you, it's a hundred and ten volts, a hundred and twelve volts. It's a very general look, and I don't change anything from map to map. Once I set up the parameters, I harden them, and I don't change them. In other words, if you were to ask me, "What would happen if I moved the antenna up from sixty feet to a hundred and twenty?" All I'm changing is the height of one antenna, and you would see the coverage change on that one cell, okay? And I try to keep it that way, so I don't get bogged down into, uh, what kind of phone, uh, you know? All I take into consideration is the terrain. And, and it gets even more complicated, because, um, with these new frequency bands that they're use, using, uh, foliage now enters the equation. If you have a wooded area, the coverage changes from summer to winter. Now, in winter, there's no leaves on trees, so therefore, uh, it propagates like a screen door right through it. But in the spring and the summertime, you get leaves with water in them, and that absorbs RF energy, and you get less coverage. So, you add that to the mix, and it gets even more complicated. So, I try to give a, a, a very generalized picture to eliminate all of those anomalies that make things just very confusing.
So, you're looking at this in having the new coverage, coverage here than good coverage on this map. There's no actual study done, is you in this area testing that, if there's that or coverage. You're not standing there.
Oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, you're correct. But, but see, I will tell you. Um, I have done similar studies, let's say FM radio stations, where I have predicted coverage, and I have actually gone to the site and measured it, and I was within a couple of percentage. I mean, these propagation, propagation models are pretty darn accurate. Uh, this is not rocket science. It's, it's pretty good. But again, don't try to view this as, um, you know, like I'm saying, an absolute value of ten volts, twenty volts, thirty volts, you know? It's, it's more of a general thing to give you an idea. What I try to do is, I try to give you indoor coverage, in-building coverage with the orange and the, uh, the bluish one being outside, because that's what we're looking for. Because in a building, example, when you, when you're outside, uh, you get one coverage. You, you jump into your tuna fish can, and guess what happens? You lose coverage, okay? When you go into your house, depends if you have aluminum siding on your house, or if you have, uh, insulation with aluminum on it, guess what happens? You'll notice that your cellphone gets less coverage. Uh, you go by a window, it changes. So, all of these variables, uh, you don't notice, but they're there. Uh, we're just, we're just immune to them, because we don't pay attention to it. But all of those variables can come into play in this kind of analysis. And when you start doing that, uh, it gets really complicated, and, uh, it gets to be a PhD exercise when you start doing this. You can even do things like wall thickness and figure out what's gonna happen through a wall. If you, if I was doing a, like a paging system for a fire department, I would be concerned about a fireman being down in the basement of a house or of a, a factory. What's the signal gonna be down in there? But this kind of analysis, you're just concerned about, "Do I have coverage or don't I have coverage?" And that, that was the intent of, of the study. I, you know, I try to make it simple, and it gets, it gets fuzzy really fast.
So, basically, the, the request that came forth last year, to correct me if I'm wrong, is due to increase in data, data need, correct? Just data need, not voice, but data, right?
I believe so, yes. Yeah, for data capacity. It's to offload the surrounding sites, make sure they're operating where they need to. So, it's not only increasing the capacity in the general area, but it's gonna offload the surrounding towers and make their signal stronger as well.
So, what, in this area where it's proposed, what study or was the... So what, in this area where it's proposed, what study or was the, whoever is doing the analysis, were they actually in this area when, for Verizon, testing the data usage and if data was needed?
They use their propagation system in office. The RF engineers do not travel to the field for that. They use a, a, a system.
Also to help you out, each one of these sites, it's not like in the old days where you would drop phone calls and you would know what would happen. You call the cell companies, say, "Why, why am I, why am I losing dropping phone calls?" Well, today, these sites are very, very automated to the fact that if a site, as I, as I've seen in their systems, what happens is these sites collect huge amounts of data. They'll, there's no more voice, by the way. Everything's data. Your voice gets transmitted as data. There's no more voice. So the problem comes in is these sites know how much data's going through them, if they have dropouts, all these issues. And when the systems get an alert, they'll say, "This system is getting overcapacity." The RF engineers at, like Verizon, will be alerted to the fact that one of their sites is being attacked to the, to the extreme. Then they're going to go back in, look at it and say, "What do we do to fix the problem? Going to be repositioning the antennas, moving them up, moving them down, do whatever they got to do." Their last course of action is put another site in because it's expensive. They would much rather change antennas, reposition things to satisfy the need. But in this case, they have, they have a coverage problem to begin with, number one. But even more important, they have, they do have a capacity problem.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you. Is there a fiber line that will be going to this site?
That's something that the Verizon transport team would work on directly with the fiber companies. They send out an information, all the fiber companies in the area.
How are you working on bandwidth if you're not working on that? I mean, every, every fiber here goes through the same switch, so.
Yeah, so I mean, there's fiber in the area, but there's.
So you're really not affecting bandwidth if you're just adding one more fiber line to the same switch?
I guess I'm not understanding the question.
Well, all the fiber lines all go through the same spot. I mean, so it's not like you're running a whole new pipe all the way to the internet. It's, it's going to the same switch, I'm, I'm assuming, so.
Question is, where's the bottleneck?
That's the bottleneck.
Is it the fiber or is it the cell tower? Where's the bottleneck?
You don't store the information on that line between that and the next, and the switch that it's, fiber doesn't store information. So what, are you adding another trunk line somewhere to get this new capacity or this new bandwidth?
Yeah, that's my area of expertise, so I don't want to.
Okay.
See, any other council members have any questions? I know that Mr. Neal, do you have any questions on the study at all? Regarding the study of what's?
Like, like I said before.
I know we're going to have opportunity down the road. I just want to make sure if you have any questions on the study, sir.
I, thank you. I, I read it once and I did not have the opportunity to actually decipher it. I don't have a color photocopier. 99.9% of the work that I have is data at the office and that's black and white. What is the, just maybe some generic questions. On figure six.
Sure, can you sit up to the microphone?
Sure.
On fig, on figure six, it says present coverage and you got a coverage gap. What is the radius of that coverage gap?
It's, that white area is a coverage gap.
What, what's the physical dimensions?
I didn't put a scale on it. I could if you want, but.
Are we talking 200 feet, 1,000 feet?
Oh, no. It's, that whole area that's white is, I consider had a coverage gap.
But it means, it means nothing to me. I have no idea what your scale is. I don't know if we're looking at 10 miles from the top to the bottom or if we're looking at a half mile?
I, I didn't put a scale on it. I didn't think it was needed. I'm just showing the gap in coverage, yes, no. It's a yes, no kind of thing. I mean, I could put a scale, but what, okay.
So everything on this page that's white is gap coverage then?
Just, I'm just looking at this area right here. I'm not concerned about outside the circle.
So we have no idea coverage gap on this, other than just this little circular area that we don't know how big it is?
That's all I'm analyzing is the, the effect of that new tower on this coverage area in this system. There are other sites around here, but they don't affect this, this coverage area.
Okay. Are you aware that the golf course has a significant acreage of property surrounding that site?
No.
Okay. Did anybody tell you that they have acres and acres and acres surrounding that coverage gap?
No.
Are you aware that this, that they have control over probably a half a mile? Probably, maybe not a half mile, you're going to go at least three-eighths of a mile north and going at a diagonal to the northeast and also to the southeast, they probably go at least a half to three-quarters of a mile?
What, what is the purpose of your question?
Purpose of my question is, is that you test, you said earlier that you're only looking at this, just this one little spot. And it was, it was difficult, complicated to look at other sites because the applicant only looked at this site here. And you said that getting ownership, lease agreements to where you can locate those other towers comes into play. And my purpose of my question is, if you knew that they have a significant amount of area in which a tower could be located to serve the same purpose to have this coverage gap eliminated?
That's, that was not my duty.
Okay.
I think, I know, I understand, I understand your question.
Yeah.
But the only thing he could look at was this site. And then we, and Nancy went over that about talking about the other sites and I just want to make sure.
Yep, no, I'm, I'm fully aware of that.
Okay.
Were you also aware that the golf course was proposing another site closer to their building, but planning and zoning for East Grand Forks denied that?
I have no idea.
Okay. So there was all, there were, all, there is alternative sites on the golf course that could accommodate the tower. Are you, you're not aware of that either?
I could care less.
Fills that in, doesn't it? Are you, or can, can a provider power down? Can they, can they, can they limit their signal strength? We already know that AT&amp;T and some of the other one can slow the, can slow the speeds down.
I know you're a lawyer, but I want to tell you something right now. If you don't know what you're talking about and you ask a question, I'll give you an answer. But here's the problem. Do they power down their system? Your phone powers down the system. In other words, the closer you get to a cell tower of Verizon, it powers down automatically. It communicates because of one thing. They're in the business of conserving batteries in your phone. So the question is, do they power down? Yes, they do. But depends on each user, where they are in proximity to the tower. So they would love to, you know, they're operating a system that is on the same frequency bands and they have to be careful of interference from one site to another. So they don't, they don't want to use maximum power all the time. They use the minimum power required to compete, to complete the communication. So that's how they do it. It's, it's a, it's a very complex system because if you had your phone at full power all the time, the batteries would go down in a couple of hours. But what they do is they, they limit it so they extend their battery life, they, they extend their integrity of their system and they keep everything the way it is. And that's from a safety perspective because most people, when they use their phone, where do they put it? Next to their head. The closer you get to your head and more power you have, the more RF you have. So that's another safety concern. So they're, they're doing this all the time. It's all part of the system. And like I said, when I analyze a system, I have to analyze it from what they have proposed because it gets to be very complicated, very fast and very expensive. And I, you know, that's just the way it is. I know they had another site because I had plans on the other site closer to.
Yes, that was the first one.
Right.
That you had an application for, to which I stated that's not where they're looking.
Right. And we moved it and I, I started everything over.
So he was aware of it, but he wasn't.
I didn't analyze it.
And I may not understand all your technical stuff, but what I do understand is when I get this and I have maybe a couple hours to take a look at it and not understand it, that's a problem. I can understand it. But what I don't appreciate is, is that you don't, or you, what is done is, this is, it's like, like I said earlier, if you want to buy a particular piece of equipment, whether it be a lawnmower or it be a payloader, you, all you have to do is set the specs and you're going to get one manufacturer. If you're looking at the coverage gap with the tower just on this one spot, to me, that is not sufficient. You're not doing the city good. You're not doing the citizens any good. I understand what you're saying, Gary, is that you don't have the ability, that that's not what your engagement is. And without knowing that there's other places to put it at, I think that that's a big problem. But if there was, what was wrong with the, the place that was first suggested to you?
It was the wrong site. It wasn't, wasn't on the application.
Okay. So if the golf course, like they told us at a private meeting, that they first suggested that spot, would that be a spot that you could look at?
If the city directs me to, I could look at it, but the problem you're going to have is, from a legal perspective, is the applicant has applied for a spot and this is a spot that the city has to review. If, if you want to review another spot, that's, you can do it all you want. But the problem comes in from a legal perspective of the city is, the city has an application, they have to review the application. They cannot start playing what-if scenarios because if they do, it could be a legal issue for the city.
They also could have a legal issue the way you're doing it. Now, who's the, who's the applicant? Is it the golf course and the city, like what's been represented to us at other meetings? Or is it just Verizon? Have you seen the application?
The city has nothing to do with this. The application says the golf course and Verizon, yes.
Okay, they say it's owned, the land is owned by the city. There's a, there's a lease agreement between the city and the golf.
No, no.
No, not this piece.
Not, but, but there's other parts of the golf course that there is.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of parts of the town that are, but this is actually on golf course land.
No, but originally, what, the golf course told us, the board of directors had a meeting, they specifically told us that they asked for a site that was closer out of the area that would not interfere and they were shot down. We were also told that it was Verizon and the golf course that made a joint application for the cell tower. And you talked about the applicant and if the applicant is the golf course, I would like to know why, if there was another spot, that would have been less intrusive. Why wasn't that looked at first? We were specifically told, planning and zoning is the one that nexted.
They're referring to the one by the new clubhouse. And the argument was, part of our requirements of the cell tower was that it had to be in the least conspicuous place where there was trees and coverage and that was directly in the middle of an open lot. They applied for this site first.
Who's this?
They, Verizon and the Valley Golf Course, applied for this site first. They withdrew this application. They submitted a second application in next to the new clubhouse. That was not a location that met our requirements. That was denied. They came back to this application after what Verizon has said was, this was the best location for them. That is all that I can accept.
So obviously then Verizon has done some studies. They've looked at other locations to come up with some kind of an alternative location other than this one? They, they have.
The one that brought to the new clubhouse.
Yeah, and there's been, obviously there'd be other locations as well then. I, I thought that that was one of the things that you were talking about earlier, Gary, that if it's in the summer and you have leaves and the water, that's going to interfere. And now if you have a place that's going to be out in the open, you're not going to have that interference year-round. Wouldn't that be a better spot? At least from that perspective?
No, because, you know, this, you have to understand, this coverage study you're looking at is not meant to be an engineering thing that says, you know, values to things. It's, it's meant to be a yes, no kind of thing because the city's got to make a determination first simply, is there, is there a gap in coverage or isn't there a gap in coverage? Okay? The problem now comes in is, when, when a provider comes to a city and says, "I need it for capacity," it's very, very difficult to do a study on capacity because in and by itself depends on a lot of other factors. And, you know, the distance that, on these maps, it's not important because all we're trying to show is that, does it meet the requirements of having a gap in coverage? If there was, if this site didn't provide the coverage, when you put the thing back in, you wouldn't see the white disappear, okay? This intended is to hook up to this three sites together. Because to the east of the site, I don't know what it looks like. I don't know if there's any houses there or a lot, you know? The thing you're, you're looking at is, the coverage doesn't stop at the end of these little circles because RF keeps going. And it, it goes, determine, like I said, the phone quality, the terrain, the season. So you can, you might be able to, in the summertime, only go a mile from this tower. And the winter, you might be able to go five miles, okay? But, but a company like Verizon can't bet on what the season's going to be, if it's going to rain, snow, what the terrain is a mile away. They have to look at their coverage as it is right now and their system. I, I can understand you're, you're trying to, to move it to another site. But as you notice, when you look at these, you start moving these around, they start getting closer and closer to each other and then you start interfering with each other and they're trying to avoid that. That's why the circles are very small because they're trying to eliminate the potential interference between their existing system. They can't move it any closer because they, they cause interference to themselves. They don't want to do that.
But you haven't studied the other towers. The other thing is, is that, have you looked at the elevations?
It's part of this, that's part of the.
And what's, what's the, what's the elevation differential from where the tower site is to 200 feet away?
I have no idea.
Wouldn't that, isn't the height of the tower also important on your coverage gap?
Yeah, and I had, I had a look at what the city, they, they said 65 feet is what this tower's proposed. That's what I analyzed. And in fact, I even recommended the city to go 20 feet higher.
Did you look at the, did you drive out there and look at the site to see what vegetation's out there?
No.
Okay. So you haven't taken that into consideration?
I don't have to.
Okay.
And I also, for a point of clarification, the planning commission or myself can deny a special use permit application. We only make recommendations.
Oh, I'm fully aware of that.
Okay, so to state that we denied it, it's not, in fact, truthful.
What we were told, what we were told by the golf course, and I'm not making this up, they said that's what they wanted it and your name specifically was brought up, that you're the one that said you can't put it there. I'm not saying it's right. I'm just reporting it firsthand.
They also said that the council wanted this tower, so they lied to you there too.
Yeah.
So there's two that they got caught.
Yeah. One thing that you could explain for me is if the city, if you are going to have more than one provider on the same tower, you were talking earlier about the interference with each other. Isn't that going to be exaggerated when you're going to be on the same tower?
No.
It'll work, it'll work on the same tower, but it won't work on different towers within a certain period of time?
Different providers have different channels, different frequencies. It's an A and a B. But the problem is that Verizon has this A channels. These are all in the same channel band. Another provider like AT&amp;T is on a whole separate classification of bands. Might be the C band. It's a different set of channels.
Okay, so then they shouldn't have any interference that you talked about. You said the problem was that the interference of the T-Mobile.
No, no, with Verizon.
Verizon.
Between Verizon and Verizon, they're on the same channel. So it's, this is only looking at Verizon.
He's referring to the T-Mobile tower that Verizon's on.
All right.
Yeah.
So they, all they have to do is find another tower. If, if the city requires three providers on one tower and you have a tower that only has one or two providers, that should look, should be looked at first, I would think.
And I've addressed that. I said, to, to solve that problem, you have two options. Number one, eliminate the ordinance requirement that they put. Number one, eliminate the ordinance requirement that they put...
No, he's referring to Verizon should have looked at a different tower.
Yeah.
They did. See...
Was that part of the application? Or did you look at that?
Before they even apply, look at, all these providers, all these providers, and I, I've been doing this for 35 years, these providers are not going to build a tower where they don't need it. If they have a water tower, an existing tower, a building, that can accommodate their system, they will use it. Because they don't want to go through zoning and planning. They can avoid all that by just sticking on an existing tower and, and go for it. So the problem comes in is, you're saying that they look at it. Before these guys from site acquisition people go out, they're armed with one thing. Here's a search area, the golden circle. They would love to have it in that circle. Their first goal is to find it in that circle. They can't go outside that circle, because if they propose a tower a half a mile away, they would get their head handed to them. Because it doesn't fit. It does not fit the equation. They're not going to put a tower where, A, it doesn't work, cause interference on their existing system, and if they can get a willing landowner to give them a lease. That's the problem. You can have a tower all you want, there's a tower there, but if you can guarantee that they can get a lease and it works, works in their system, they would jump right on it.
They're also asking, if there's, if there's another tower available that's owned by another company that has a spot available to it, they will look at that.
Oh, absolutely.
But you're assuming that because of your 30 years. Did you get any protocol? Did you get any information from Verizon that they in fact did that?
They looked at six different sites. Yes, I do. They looked at six different sites.
And which six were they?
I have no idea.
We looked at the tower located to the east, that's 20th and 3rd. That's over a mile from our target search area that had a radius of a quarter mile. And so we sent that lat-long, that elevation to RF. This is an existing tower. We sent the one located to the north. They're already on that one. The one located to the east was too far away from the search area to meet their goal.
All four of the towers that are north of the golf course were checked?
Yes, they're already on the one to the north. One of the couple tall ones that are out there, they're already on that one.
Okay, and why can't they put, what about, you're saying that the one on 3rd and 20th is not going to work?
No, it's over a mile to the east of our proposed site. That's a long distance in this capacity.
So what do you have south? Because you don't have another tower until you get to the point area, and the point area, there are two of them. One on South Reinhardt, way down, two miles, actually a little over two miles from the VFW, and then you also have the one that's on Biglin Road. That is probably three to four miles di- distance between the north, actually it's probably five or six miles between the north tower and the south tower. What's covering, what's covering that?
We have an approved tower located right next to the fire department by the VFW arena.
I know that, but you're not using that now, so what's providing coverage now?
Right now, there's a gap. When they get it on the build plan and get the budget for it, it will be built.
And that tower is about a mile from the one on Biglin Road, and it's over two and a half, 2.3 to 2.4 miles from the one on Reinhardt. And now you're saying you can't go a mile and a quarter? And actually, it's not a mile and a quarter.
Do you have any more questions on the study? Mr. Neal? Like I said, we're going to have the opportunity to have the public hearing on the road, too. So, I mean, if you, if you go through this and you have more questions, I wouldn't...
Okay, did you get your email?
Are you done, Mr. Neal?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
We've beaten this enough.
Want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to talk, so. Okay, appreciate it. No one else has anything else? We'll move on to the next item. Appreciate everybody's time.
I guess...
In answer to any closing?
I, I do just have one quick question. Are we going to set a hearing date? Is this at a later time? Do we want to do it now? Do we want to make sure that, I mean, at some point, we're going to have to address the application itself, whether we approve or deny, or whatever we do, we have to at least address the application.
This one's the first opportunity to set it out. Are we three weeks out now, then, or are we two weeks out?
I don't, it would be on my phone.
For proper notification, I mean, are we going to be...
Oh, we'd have to be in the March sometime.
Well, March is a few days.
March 20th?
Thanks, Ron.
Because that would mean I would have to have the hearing notice out on Monday. Letters, so it would run on Wednesday, and I would have to have the letters done on Wednesday. It would be the same. I mean, it, it really would just be the same public hearing and, yeah, so.
That's what you guys want to do, then, we can do that.
Go for the 20th?
Can we do the public hearing and the vote the same night?
You certainly could. Depends upon what you want to do, or how you want to handle it. Whether you're going to approve it or not, you may want to have a, have somebody that is a, a court reporter transcribe the meeting. If so, you're not going to have it available for, for utilizing in your, your decision. If it's approved, you don't really run into the issue. If it's not approved, you have to have substantial evidence in the record on the reasons why you disapproved it, and you've got to provide the notice of, of, to Valley and to Verizon almost immediately upon your decision. So, go ahead.
Is the shot clock running?
Right now, I think we're okay, because it was waived.
Oh, okay. Just, I raise it as a point.
Yeah, it was waived.
No, no, we asked Verizon to waive the 60-day, to complete the study.
I just want to make sure.
Yep, no.
And the review of video won't work, since we have video?
Well, you can, what I'm looking at more than anything is, if you're going to need a transcript, or if you need to provide that, the, the video, so we could do that if there's ever an appeal. But there's got to be a basis for a denial, or if there's a vote in favor of it, it's basically because you're indicating that there was a denial, you know, there was a gap in coverage and it satisfied the requirements of our, of our code.
Basically, you're advising us to have the hearing, and then a week later, may have the vote.
That would be my advice, yes.
Okay.
Two weeks later. To the next word.
Yes, please.
As long as we have the timelines correct. So 20th and a week later would be the vote.
It would be, I would, I would adjourn the hearing to, to make a decision. So you'd actually have to have a, a, a work, it couldn't be a work session. It would have to be a regular session where you could make a decision.
Yeah, we were thinking about having the public hearing on the 20th, council meeting, and then they could adjourn, or they could, you're saying they could...
Adjourn that, adjourn the public hearing for a decision-making process to whenever you could set the date, but you have to have a date that you can make a decision.
And that could be at the 27th work session, if they wanted to.
It could be if you, if you notice it as such.
All right, anything else? Nancy, sorry.
No, I'm, I just wanted to make sure that we had a path moving forward, so that we're not in limbo, so.
All right, move on to number two, then. 2018 tip amendment request for transit capital project. Ms. Els.
Thank you, President Olsted and council members. This should be a quick one. Earl has requested that I do a tip amendment. We have funds set aside to purchase a replacement bus for dial-a-ride and backup for existing regular route bus. Originally, the state was going to pay for it. Now, our federal grant dollars are going to pay for it instead. It's, a grant's already written, we already have the funds. We already have the local share budgeted in our capital improvement, so it's just requesting a change to the, to the dollars.
I move we approve the amendment for the bus.
Yep. So, and, and that'll just go to the next meeting. If you're comfortable with me putting it on the consent agenda as a tip amendment, then we're good.
That's a good, good motion, though, Mike.
So, yep, I just, we just have to get your approval and...
He's trying to help you out, so.
Yep. But thank you, yes.
He's trying to get you out of here.
Okay, that's it, that's all I have for this one.
Anybody have any questions for Nancy on that? I see none.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Number three, rental request of VFW arena by the EGF Arts and Crafts Council and EGF Blue Line Club. Read. Henry, please sit down so everybody can talk, please. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last fall, we put ice in for a month in September for the Blue Line Club to rent the VFW arena. And at the work session that we discussed that option for the Blue Line Club, one of the things we talked about was going forward for this year, were there any options to be able to put the ice in a month early and leave it in for the duration of the season, instead of what we did this past fall of put it in for a month, remove it for about a 10-day window, so that we could host the arts and crafts show like we always have, and then reinstall the ice again for the regular ice season. So following that work session, I had some discussion with the Arts and Crafts Council, asked them to, if there were any other venues in East Grand Forks that may be an option for them, ultimately asked them to go and research and meet with some other venues in town and see if anything met their needs. Then they recently, a few weeks ago, sent a letter back with some other findings, and in short, the findings in their letter basically stated that there were roadblocks at any of the other venues that they looked at. They went to Central Middle School, the high school, the Heritage Center, and a few of them, just whether they were roadblocks because the venue wasn't big enough, it didn't have the security needs, there were concerns about managing the flow of people and the equipment that the crafters bring for the weekend that would, would take place on the gym floors. Ultimately, all led to them saying that, the Arts and Crafts Council saying that there wasn't a site that they felt met the needs for their event, the way the VFW arena does, and they've requested again to be able to use that for the event. I've had some conversation with the Blue Line Club. They felt that their month of ice, that they rented out from us to have fall camps and activities, was successful, and that it's something they'd like to do again. And we talked through a couple of different scenarios with them, but ultimately, in light of the request from the, the Arts and Crafts Council and the findings they had, the Blue Line Club, you know, would be, if we had to do it for the same sort of rental rate we did this year, and the same sort of activity of install ice and then remove it again, they would be willing to rent it, they would want to rent it again from us, kind of under the same standard we did this last fall. So, I kind of ran through that quickly, but all the information there in front of you, and that'd be, I guess, my first thought is to move forward with, basically repeating what we did last fall for the month of September, install ice, remove it, have the arts and crafts show, and then put it back in again.
Was there a fee for that, taken on, taken off?
There was. We charged the Blue Line Club the rental fee. The fee we charged them was $14,500, and that, that figured in, the staff and the utilities to install the ice, run the month of camp, and then the time to take the ice out. And that was all there on the, the Blue Line Club.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody like to address the council at this time? Anybody? No questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Number four, rental request of Blue Line Arena for AC Expo's gun show. Read.
Okay. We've got a request from a group called AC Expos Gun Shows to rent the Blue Line Arena for a weekend in June. The weekend I have in the, in the packet I handed out, June 1st to 3rd, I got a call from the gentleman that's, that would like to organize this yesterday, and he maybe wants to change his date in June, but planned the idea of a month in June. The, I'm sorry, a weekend in June, thank you. The general idea here is that this gentleman travels all over the state of Minnesota hosting gun shows. He brings in a trailer of equipment, tables and chairs, and does all of the work to find vendors, recruit vendors to set up tables, to sell guns, or show off guns to the general public, and the public would pay an admission fee to get into the building. He would hire and provide the security to have watch over the building for the weekend that the vendors were set up. And so more than anything is just looking for a space. The city's responsibility would be to have somebody on-site for the duration of it, to basically manage the building, clean bathrooms, empty garbage cans, answer questions for the public of general how to get around, that kind of thing. But one person on-site for the duration, the daily durations, would be able to accomplish that work. So I followed up, I sent this, the first time I got the call, I sent the request through Mr. Gallstead and CNH Insurance to the League of Minnesota Cities, to see if they had any thoughts or concerns on the idea of hosting a gun show in one of our facilities, and the, the general response was that, no, there are communities all across the state that do it, and the biggest thing would be that we'd want to make sure we have additional insurance, and that the, the holder of the gun show, AC Expos, would issue us a certificate that listed us additionally insured. So I've communicated that with him, and that was something that he's used to in going to different events, so. I think the discussion for this group is whether or not this is something that we want to host at our venue, and then if we do a suggested rental rate, I suggested to him that $300 a day would be the lowest we would go, just to cover the time of staff and the work that would go into it. And it sounded like that was pretty consistent with what he's rented for dry floor buildings and other communities he's been in, so.
Henry?
I'd like to make a comment. They, we've got a gun dealer right downtown, and what you're doing here, you're taking somebody from coming out of, out of the area and putting on a gun show. What you're doing is making it difficult for them to develop. Now, what we've done in the past, we, we let sport groups and so forth, nonprofits, this is, this is a profit deal. And I am vehemently against it. That means if we're going to rent, let stuff out for every Tom, Dick and Harry, and we're going to hurt local merchants, well then I think we're going the wrong direction. If you get Ducks Unlimited, groups like that, we do fine. If we've got to take and balance budgets by something like this from out of town, I don't care who he is or what he is, but I'm not against guns. I taught guns. I, I taught more weapons than most people, so, and everybody in my family has taken gun training, and my grandchildren, everybody else. But it's a business decision. We've got, we've got gun dealer here, we've got, they have one across the river, you've got Shields. These people are here. And let's keep renting it out to nonprofits, because that's what I think we should do. Maybe the rest of you disagree, but I, I don't think we should bring people in and start, the effect would be putting other people out of business that are local.
Mr. Nevers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess the timing on this is, is a bit of a coincidence, I guess, with all the national media, but I guess in my opinion, I think one of the biggest things as a city we need to do is be consistent with our application and use of things. Obviously, we can use judgment that will allow some variation to that consistency, but I think at the, at our, at a principle level, we should seek consistency. And we do allow people with different hobbies, different interests, access to our buildings. And I think there's nothing outside of the, the decency, or, you know, outside of the norm that a gun show brings, that, you know, if it was a hate group rally or something like that, I could see making an argument against that. Now, like I said, we have... Now, like I said, we have craft shows, we have, you know, ice show, or ice shows, we have, you know, ice training. We do a lot of different things in there. We're hopefully gonna do some health stuff that we're allowing, you know, nonprofit, or, well, I guess altruist nonprofit, but, I mean, people that, to expand their business in our facilities. So I think, I don't have a problem with the gun show per se. And that's not to say that I don't think there's a difference between a gun and a crafted doily. But, but I think we need to be consistent with how we allow use to our facilities. That being said, I, the problem I have with gun shows isn't their access. It's that we allow unlicensed sellers to sell. And I would be full in favor with this if we require any dealer to be licensed. And the reason for it is because if you're licensed, you have to do background checks, you have to do all the stuff that's required to do, to transfer a firearm. And like I said, I, we live in northwestern Minnesota. I have, I don't personally use firearms because it's just not how I was brought up. But I'm around them enough. I mean, Clarence, you, you train people, you know, for, in school and stuff. I'm all for it. I think they're, the idea that we, it's either all or nothing is, is ridiculous. But there are simple things that we can do, simple steps that we can do that will, will make it safer. It's never gonna be perfectly safe, it's never gonna be, you know, 100% zero leakage for, for these type of things. And there's, you know, who knows if someone makes a back deal and says, "Well, I'm not actually selling here, but here's my card, do it online." I'm not saying that this is gonna get around it, but that would be my requirement, is that it is for licensed dealers and licensed dealers only. So, that would, and, and then what we charge, the group that does the hockey camp, what do we charge them?
The, the Blue Line Club?
Well, it's not the Blue, it's the, the guys that come in. It's not the Blue Line Club that does it, do they?
Yeah, the summer hockey camp and the...
I thought we had a couple guys that came in and did one outside of that.
The, the summer, the summer camp in June, the Blue Line Club organizes it. They hire coaches, but they, they hire and pay those coaches. So, but that, it's hard...
That has ice and all that, but...
It's hard to equate that because it's ice. So, in the summer, their rate, the last years, has been $9,000 for the month. And then again, that month of September this past year was $14,500. You know, the rate that we've charged the last number of years to the Arts and Crafts Council for their three-day event has been $200 a day for each of the Civic Center and the VFW Arena. And again, kind of going back to the meeting we had a few weeks ago regarding the Ann Carlson Center use, one of the things that we discussed at the council meeting was even reviewing those rates and whether or not that's, is that still a rate that covers the cost of the staff? A little bit of the work that I put into this in, in talking about a $300 a day rate, I figured for a staff person to be in the building, a part-time staff person to be in the building for the times that they needed, it's gonna cost us about $700 to $750.
Right, and that's, and that is...
That's where I came up with $300 a day.
But we're subsidizing the, the structure. I mean, there's, there's nothing without having a big building there. So, it goes beyond just, you know, that's what the staff is doing. So, that's what I'm trying to get at is, obviously, we want to cover our costs to make it not a loss, but when we factor that in, we have to think, hey, we're subsidizing these to tune up a couple hundred thousand dollars, or quarter million apiece, or whatever it ends up being. So, yes, it doesn't cost us to have an extra person there, but we gotta keep the lights on, we gotta maintain it, we gotta make sure that it's still standing. So, I would suggest, is, and is there a entry fee, I'm assuming, for this? How much?
Five.
Five dollars? Oh, that's, okay. I guess I would, I would take a little bit different approach to the, to the fee. And I don't have a number, I'll admit, I don't have one right now, but I would say it's, it should be considerably more.
And actually, what I'm gonna say is, I think you've got a fee schedule that you've, that you've already approved or has been approved, so you're gonna probably want to either modify that or revisit how you're, how you're...
Yeah, and if there is a fee schedule that's been approved, I, I don't know, but I'm not sure.
I know we, we've approved one in the past that specifically had rental rates on it for, ice rentals.
Yeah, and that's the only, so, to your point, Mr. Gallstead, about the fee schedule, the only fee, building rental fee that I've known of has been the $200 a day rate for dry floor events. Which, that's, again, I think, one that with, I don't know how many years ago it was that that was agreed to, but I think that that even could be revisited for a lot of the same reasons.
Oh, I think you can revisit anything, it's just a matter of going ahead and, and setting your policy.
Yeah, yeah. And I would agree too, Mr. Demers, with some of your thoughts on, on the rental rates. And part of that is the reason I brought it forward here today, to get even an opinion on what, what is a number that, if we're going to raise it to, you know, what is reasonable to still make events if, if it's a rental? Is that a goal of ours, is to rent the buildings out more for dry events? And then what is a reasonable rate for that? That it's still attractive to rent it, but enough that we're happy covering not only our costs, but maybe making a little bit on at the same time? I haven't been able to gain a formula from other colleagues or communities I've talked to in how we charge, what, what are the utilities for the day? When we just have the lights on and we need to clean the bathrooms, or we have the bathroom water running to wash hands, you know? And really, the response I've had from talking to a few other communities, some have rates set that it's very simply $300 a day for no matter what the event is. Others take it on a case-by-case basis. The Grand Forks Park District, when they rent out their dry floor events, it's, well, it depends on what you need from us and how much time you need it for, and how many employees are gonna be there, and it, it really has been case-by-case. So, I would be open to any suggestion on that. And certainly, if, if it is, can be brought forward in the future to set a better policy for it, I'd be all for it as well.
So, just to clear up, this is a licensed person, though, just to make, the guy doing this, just so everybody knows.
But he's looking for vendors that come in.
I know, I understand, but I'm just saying him himself, he is, I just wanted to make...
And I can certainly follow up with him and get a, I'm sure we can request a lot more information from him on how his vendors are signed up for, if they're licensed, where they're licensed, and maybe Chief Edland, you could help out with, I don't know if you, if that's your area or not, but to help out with what's required.
I'm not an expert yet. I know there's pending legislation in the Minnesota House in the near future that they're looking at requiring actual licenses for, for any other gun show. They're gonna have to transfer permits and things like that. That isn't a requirement at this point in time.
Okay.
But I don't know all the details, but legally, it's not required at this time.
But it's our facility, so we get to set the rules, right? Exactly.
Requirements you want, but as far as state statute goes, it's not required.
Mr. Grassel.
I would agree with, um, over here.
Mr. Demers?
What's his name?
Mr. Demers, how could I forget? And about the license piece, and then also offering, ask him if he's going to offer a spot to the vendors that we have in town. I would assume if we're gonna try to have a, a gun show, that he's gonna try to draw as many people, using those people in town and across the river would probably be a smart thing for him to do. That might be the only way I might go for it.
Mr. Pachivinsky.
Thank you. My, my policy on our facilities is we are open for business and we don't protect businesses. And if this, this is something that can attract people and public would enjoy, I'm all for it. I would, I agree with Mr. Demers and Mr. Grassel about the concerns about, because it is guns and firearms, that, that we want to make sure that we're dealing with reputable people, that he is licensed. I would ask that we follow up and do, check, check some references to make sure that this, this individual's got a track record of being a stand-up person and that his, that his events are safe and, and all of the other things that, that they should be. And I would also encourage you to work with the, the chief and the police department because that is their, their job is public safety and, and, but, but if, if all of those things are, are, are okayed, then, and, and of course, the getting a fair, fair rent for the, the facility. $300 is not enough, I just don't think it is, especially since we're gonna staff it. But, but with all that being said, if someone wants to have an event in East Grand Forks that, that people enjoy and commerce takes place, I'm all for it.
Mr. Reed, did you have something?
I, I agreed with Mr. Grassel and Mr. Demers. Mr. Pachivinsky puts a valid point there, too. There's gonna be some administrative costs to this whole thing if we're gonna have you checking, the chief checking, we've got our city attorney drying up an agreement on this, that those should be passed on also, and I don't think $300 is enough either.
Did you ever talk to the local gun dealer about this?
No, I haven't.
Well, as a courtesy, I think you should. I mean, Shields and those people are big enough to, he could take care of himself. But this gun dealer, he's also in Grand Forks where he used to be the food operation. I think that's just a courtesy. But we normally let nonprofits, that's what I'm getting at. There's a lot of difference.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. President. My experience with gun shows is it draws a lot of people into your town, and they come from a long distance away just to go to gun shows. So, I'm all for bringing people to our town to support our other businesses. They're gonna shop, more than likely, because of the type of people that you're bringing in, they're gonna go to Cabello's, they're gonna go to Two Brothers Firearms and look them over while they're here anyway. They're gonna go to our restaurants and shop. So, I'm all for the, for it, and let's run it to them and let's bring the people to town.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
With some of the follow-up that needs to be done, questions on licensing, would you like to see me bring this back to work session in two weeks with all those answers before it, before we forward for agreement? Yeah, okay.
Can I have a quick question of Mr. Gallstead? So say we draft an agreement that says all vendors selling firearms at this, I'm not saying that this is an agreement we're coming to, but say we say, all vendors must be licensed. And then, for some reason, we find out that there, there aren't, or someone is selling that isn't licensed.
But wouldn't you say licensed?
You have to be a licensed vendor in order to sell firearms normally, right? That's what the whole gun show loophole is, right? Is that if you sell firearms, you have to be licensed, which means you have to do background checks, you have to, you know, Cabello's is a licensed vendor, right? So, if we find out that they're not, is the only repercussion that we sue them for breach of contract or something, or?
Well, if they're breaking the law, then you can...
Yeah, but there's no law, what's the law?
Well, if you're saying that they, if...
But we're not passing an ordinance, is what I'm saying, unless we pass an ordinance.
If you're gonna require everyone at the gun, every dealer at the gun show to have a federal firearms license, the, the guy putting on the show is gonna say, "See, I'm gonna go to Cruxton, or I'm gonna go to Thief River Falls and have the gun show. I'm not gonna come to your city then."
I'm fine with that.
I was gonna make that same comment. I would be quite positive that they will not be able to host a profitable gun show if you require every vendor to have an evidence.
Because then they're a dealer, and the people that are gonna be dealers are the ones that are gonna have their own shop sitting downtown or in Cabello's?
No, because they're the people that are selling that don't want to do background checks. And I, that's the problem I have. I don't want people subverting the, the rules.
You're not getting a person that is gonna be a school shooter going to a gun show and buying a gun. I don't think so.
Are you gonna guarantee that?
No.
Okay. I mean, they come from all over, and I'm not saying it's, I'm not, I mean, we want to talk, I mean, the gun debate, it's not, I'm not as worried, the stuff that makes the papers is the school shooting stuff, but there's a lot of guns out there in people's hands that shouldn't be in their hands because they're, because there's a whole black market out there. And I guess my, my point is, if you want to do it, do the background checks, do all that stuff, I'm fine with it. But when you deliberately try to get around that by subverting the system, I have a problem with it. So, that's, I've said what my requirement is, but, and I, I welcome them, too. I think that's a great thing. I, I hope that they come and do what they need to do. But the idea that the reason that they wouldn't is because they don't want to do the background checks is, is a problem for me.
Anybody else have anything? You've got what you need to get from them, you can bring it back, and we can have discussion more on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Wonderful. Move on to number five, request to purchase mower for cemetery. Reed.
Thank you again. So we have $20,000, $25,000 budgeted for a Toro mower with a grass catcher to replace the 2006 that we currently have on-site there. The 2006 that is on-site at the cemetery was replaced, a 1993, that when we replaced it, we transferred over to the park shop, and it had been using at the shop to mow and use the bagger to bag the baseball fields. Last summer, that 1993 caught on fire when we were mowing the fields and was totaled. So, if we were to purchase a new one this year, the 2006 will be transferred to the baseball fields to replace that 1993. The, the mower that I, when we were going through the summer budgeting process, I budgeted for the wrong model mower. So we have $25,000 budgeted, and the mower that we would like to get to replace, it's the exact model that's at the cemetery. The one we'd like to get is, the total price for a four-wheel drive with the grass catcher select system is $29,428.24. So we are short, just short of $5,000 from what's budgeted. But I would request that you would approve that purchase anyway, and the replacement or the extra money that we would, that we're short would actually be reimbursed by our insurance when we buy a replacement. The, the tot, the estimated value of the 1993 we lost in the fire was $5,000. And so, are the, we've already received a reimbursement from insurance for $3,700. That's $5,000 minus the $1,000 deductible, and we actually rebought that mower from the league for $300 to part out, to use what parts we could get use out of on it. Our replacement policy is 200% of the value, of the estimated value. So when we buy a replacement for that mower, which this one would be, we'll receive another $5,000 from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. If that all, if all that crazy math makes sense, $29,000 and change for the mower, we have $25,000 budgeted when we buy it. We'll get another $5,000 back from insurance that we could put into the cemetery fund to make up that shortfall in the budget. Again, it's my fault that we budgeted the wrong item. I don't know what model number I looked at, but I was wrong on it when, when I got together with Brian and started looking at the, the actual mower that we wanted. So, that's the, the price that we have there is the, it's not the state contract price, it's the national IPA contract price. The, the state contract price hasn't been finalized for 2018 yet, but it's essentially the same thing, and it's okay to purchase off just the one, the one price quote.
Anybody have any questions for, for Reed? See none, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Request to hire supervisor, facility maintenance in cemetery position. Reed.
Thank you again, lost one. We've had a chance to visit with Mr. Brian Larson about the supervisor position that we opened internally a few weeks ago. And I'd like to see him move forward with approval from, from this council to, effective upon approval, assume that position of supervisor, facility maintenance in the cemetery.
Anybody have any questions for Reed? See none.
Thank you.
Number seven, update on charter commission. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. I believe you have all received an email from me with the list of eight names that I have received of people that are potentially... the list of eight names that I have received of people that, um, are potentially interested in serving on the charter commission, um, so if anybody has any, uh, concerns with those names, please let me, any of those names, please let me know, otherwise, um, I'm looking for, uh, the okay to contact all of these people, hopefully all eight will agree to serve, and then I will work with Mr. Gallstead to get that before the district court for appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, my only concern is, uh, Mr. and I think he's a stand-up guy and is doing his best on, uh, on the EDA board, I just, I, I said at the outset that I didn't want people from this, or on this commission, or, one of my criteria is that people on this commission not be serving on another, um, so, that would be a factor for me, um, I know I, I haven't gotten all my people that I've been trying to get ahold of to you either, but, and I certainly commend folks that have already turned in people, um, but that would just be my only, um, objection, and not for merit or anything, or character by any means, it's just I, I don't believe that in this role, we should have someone that is on another commission, unless maybe you step in on, I didn't, I haven't heard anything, so, no.
Yeah, I believe you.
No. So, you wanted the names by last Friday? Are you not gonna take any more names?
Well, certainly we'll take any more na, we'll take names right up to the point that we have to submit them to the district court.
And I, and I would also, I guess my question is, is the people that are on the list, have they actually been contacted and spoken to?
And that's part of my thing, is I haven't had.
Or did we just put names on the list and then we're gonna be contacting them?
Uh, as far as what I've been told, all the people have been contacted, um, there are some that have some concern about the time commitment and those type of things that I would be going through with them once I got okay with it.
Okay, Sam Bell, say everything on that? If not, thank you, sir. Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Fooled by Reapel.
Second.
Second, MacGrassell, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion is approved, meaning is adjourned. You guys wanna take?